Can you hear me now? If I could have your attention just for a second. People are in the hallway and that is a code violation, a city fire violation. I want to keep, I want to remind you, there's another meeting exactly like this tomorrow night. But once these chairs are filled, that's going to be pretty much it. If you want to sit on the floor, we're okay with that. Don't, you know, about up in here. And if there's a way to get against the wall, that'll be okay. But we're then beginning to violate the maximum occupancy violation of the fire code. We can't, we, that's against the law, we cannot. It's announced for this room, for this building, we have no choice. The law says we have to do it here. As I just said, you can sit on the floor, yes. So, but the hallway, once the meeting starts, the hallway has to be cleared. It's a fire code violation for the hallway to be blocked. But you're welcome to come in and sit on the floor as much as that will allow. I'm sorry? As I said, we're going to allow people to sit on the floor just soon as they start coming in here. As I said, you can't be blocking the hallway. If you have to walk up and down, that's perfectly fine, so thank you, yes. So anyway, want to make that announcement, appreciate it.
The city council of, the city of Aransas passed April 30th, 2019 at 5:30. We're going to go into executive session, section 551.071 of the Texas Open Meeting Act to meet with its attorney to seek legal advice on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the city council under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act relating to annexation proceedings in industrial district. Yes? I don't have a vote. Okay, well. I'm going to read it one more time. I will. Okay, I got it, I got it. I call, I call to order the special meeting of the city council of the city of Aransas Paris, April 30th, 2019 at 5:30. We're going to go into executive session, section 551.071 of the Texas Open Meeting Act to meet with its attorney to seek legal advice on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the city council under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act relating to annexation proceedings in industrial district, and we'll be back.
We're going to reconvene in open session to consider an act if any on any item discussed in executive session.
We're going to reconvene in open session to consider an act if any on any item discussed in executive session. Okay, I'll reconvene, open session at six thirteen to consider an act and take action, if any, on any item discussed in executive session. Okay, now, I'm gonna open public hearing on annexation phase one, discuss, consider, discuss, consider, and conduct first public hearing for the proposed annexation of up to eighteen hundred seventy-four point four-two acres of land generally located on the north side of Aransas Pass within Aransas County and up to the city of Rockport extraterritorial jurisdiction. The annexation includes parcels of land between Highway thirty-five bypass and Highway thirty-five business. And we're gonna limit, we're gonna, we're gonna limit every person that comes up for three minutes. Mary's gonna take time off it, and that is to make sure that we get, and we allow every single person that's here to be heard of what they have to say. And if there's anybody in the audience outside, they're gonna have a list to be able to come in here and be able to express their opinion on what we're doing.
Mayor, as your city attorney, I would like the opportunity to address the audience. May I do so, mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, mayor and city council members. My name is Roxanne Paez Cotroneo. I am the city attorney for the city of Aransas Pass. The city council has asked me today to present two maps to you to explain its intention regarding annexation. As we began this discussion, I will be pointing to the map. There's this map and another map identical to it on the other side. Unfortunately, I can only be in one place, so I will be pointing to this map. And if I'm able to, I'll try to point to the other map with a red dot laser pointer. The city of Aransas Pass was just as shocked as the rest of you when on March the nineteenth, the city of Corpus Christi announced that they were going to initiate annexation of one thousand five hundred acres across the bay and into the Portland Gregory area. One week later, approximately ten days later, the Corpus Christi City Council then initiated another annexation, an annexation of five thousand seven hundred acres. Five thousand seven hundred acres was now to the east, and it was coming to Aransas Pass. We were concerned because one week Corpus annexed, and then the next week they annexed again. I wanna show you on this map where the total annexation of seventy-two hundred acres is for Corpus Christi. It is in this pink area outlined on this map. This pink area outlined on this map. Many of you have learned the term extraterritorial jurisdiction. People refer to that as ETJ. An ETJ is an area based on miles, and the mile is based on the city's population. So when you annex an area of the land, the city's ETJ grows like a bloom. Corpus Christi has an ETJ based on its population of a five-mile radius. Aransas Pass, based on its population, has an ETJ of a one-mile radius. I want to show you on this map the Aransas Pass city limits based on what we knew on March nineteenth and March twenty-sixth from the city of Corpus Christi. This hot purplish area outlines the city of Aransas Pass's city limits. As many of you know, the quarrel and the jewel of our town has to also be our water. Majority of the Aransas Pass city limits, almost two-thirds of it, is entirely in water. The lighter pink area is the one-mile ETJ of Aransas Pass. You see how that surrounds Aransas Pass. We're gonna come back to talk about that pink area in just a second. Let's now focus on Corpus Christi. When Corpus Christi annexed or initiated the annexation of these seven thousand two hundred acres, they extended their ETJ past the bay and into north of Portland and Gregory. You will see this blue area is their ETJ. You will see how this blue area rose from west to east, capturing Aransas Pass. That is not the only direction that Corpus Christi goes in. Corpus Christi's ETJ also follows out from the shoreline. You will see this blue area on the east side as it wraps around and comes into Aransas Pass. That's the five-mile ETJ for Corpus. We realized when Corpus initiated the annexation for the seventy-two hundred acres, it became very, very clear to us that Portland was now surrounded by Corpus Christi and could no longer grow. It also became very clear that Gregory is now surrounded by Corpus Christi and cannot grow. It became very clear to us that Ingleside was now surrounded by Corpus Christi and could not grow. So this council took swift action to make sure that we would annex for two reasons. One reason was to protect us from the intrusion of Corpus Christi. And the second reason was to protect our will of the people for economic development growth in the future of five, ten, twenty, thirty, and fifty years from now. Many of you have asked the question, how is it possible that Corpus could intrude on us? I want to show you how that could have happened. Based on the initiation of the annexations and the annexation process that we're going through, we've prevented it from happening. And we've given us the choice to operate. Let's talk about what could have happened had we not initiated the annexations. As you see, this white area in this map is sort of no man's land. Nobody's ETJ. It's nobody's city limits. It's up for the taking. Back when Corpus Christi was annexing on a weekly basis, all they would have had to have done is annex just a little more to the east, which they could have easily have done, because the property owners who own the McCambe Airport area also happen to own east of that land. They could have annexed east to that land, and as soon as they would have annexed east to that land, this bubble would have spread out and completely covered this white corridor that you see. Now, that white corridor may be difficult for you to see, so I'm gonna zoom in for it. I wanna zoom in to this circular area right here on this corridor for you. This is that corridor as it existed before the initiation of any annexations. Had Corpus annexed yet again and gone east, they would have picked up this entire white area with a straight line to the water, to the shoreline. On this shoreline, you have major industrial tracks currently. If you want to continue to have industrial tracks in this area, that may be the will of the people. But you would not have had the opportunity to exercise that option had we not initiated the annexations. I want to point out something extremely important for you to know and understand. This council knows and understands what I'm about to explain. The pink area, which is Aransas Pass's ETJ. Many of you have consistently said Corpus Christi cannot annex Aransas Pass's ETJ. Corpus Christi cannot annex Aransas Pass's ETJ. You are correct. However, and this is a big however, cities cannot protect the will of the people when it comes to economic development in the ETJ unless it's annexed. So for real, this pink area, light pink area that you see, might as well be industry, because you wouldn't be able to have it be anything else unless it's annexed. We've spoken a lot tonight quickly about the reasons. There are major tracks currently advertised for industry. I grew up in the area and familiar there used to be a carbon plant. If you want that back, it's there for you to take. If you don't, it's there for you as an option as well for the citizens of Aransas Pass to decide what the shoreline is going to look like. What I do know is that we are discussing phase one today. And in phase one, initially, when we began phase one, it was a large track of land. It was almost eighteen hundred acres of land. It was a big yellow map that everyone saw. We did that initially because we did not have enough time to prepare to beat Corpus Christi on their next city council meeting. So we took the area with the intent of hoping to reduce it, and we did. We reduced it down to the phase one map that you'll see right here. And so rather than taking the entire yellow track, we've been taking the minimal amount that we need to push Corpus Christi's ETJ off our Highway thirty-five, off a large portion of Highway ten sixty-nine, and to keep them off that shoreline so that we, the people in Aransas Pass, can decide what's going to happen with that shoreline. Mayor, I'm gonna ask that the city manager, I'm gonna ask that the city manager now explain the service plan for phase one's proposed annexation.
Mr. Mayor and council, let me see what's happening here first. Mr. Mayor and council, want to go over the service plan for phase one, and that's what we're talking about today, is phase one. And several PowerPoints that are up on the screen right now, and we passed out, we passed out copies that were back there. I'm sure there are several circulating in the audience right now. And want to go through each slide to point out how this area would be serviced as of, as we see it at this particular moment. The purpose of a service plan is to present to, to the public the city's plan for providing city services to the proposed annexed areas. This is required. We have to do this as required by state law to provide this plan. As was pointed out earlier, that's phase one. That's the large one that was first presented. However, this is the phase one that is being proposed, and this is the amended phase one, what Roxanne was talking about just a few minutes ago. The green areas, much smaller area, and consequently, a much smaller area to service also in phase one. Phase one service plan as it relates to water and sewer. This assumes everybody in, in phase one, in the phase one area, the green area, would take water and sewer. So this is the maximum figure if that were to be the case. I know that we deal with TCEQ on a regular basis, and septic systems are becoming very unpopular with, with TCEQ, the state's environmental quality agency. And whenever possible, they try to encourage people to go on city plans. If everybody were to take advantage of that, the cost would be six point five million. There's the full figure there, six point five, six million five hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars. That's with everyone taking advantage of that. Is that in reality gonna happen? Probably not, but that's the maximum we're dealing with. And there's a breakdown on phase one on how we came up with a figure of six point five million. The timing and funding for the water and sewer. Plan to have water and sewer installed in phase one by the end of two and a half years. They require time from the date of annexation approval. The city will pursue grant funding from sources such as Texas Water Development Board and the Community Development Block Grant, agencies we work with on a regular basis. Other granting options will be reviewed. The Texas Water Development Board may be our best option, quite frankly. The chances for getting that are very high. They want to see water and sewer in areas that do not have water and sewer at this point. Of course, that's gotta be paid back. The expenses associated with the construction can be phased in, however, which means the debt service can be phased in and would not hit us all at once, would not hit us so hard. The city budgetary funding would assist with any funding gaps, if there are any, not covered by grants or the Texas Water Development Board. Certificates of participation are another option. Prefer to put that down the, the priority list and prefer to go with the, the recommendation anyway to council is to go with the Texas Water Development Board. We have to weigh debt service requirements with this project against current debt service. In other words, we don't want to be too debt-heavy. And we are beginning to lose some debt in, in very, in, in upcoming years, very soon. And that frees up dollars, in other words, for projects such as this, which is a good thing. The roads and timeline. The current county roads will become city roads upon annexation, upon annexation approval, and will be maintained by city budgetary funds and grant dollars when available, budgetary funds immediately. A significant portion of Jacoby Lane is in phase one. Jacoby Lane is in good condition and will not take extensive maintenance at this time and in the immediate future. Jacoby Lane will take about eight hundred dollars in the, in immediate future to maintain, we estimate, and we toured the road. This would be worked into the city's operational budget. That does not look a lot at long-term. Long-term is a different matter. Long-term, it would be worked into our maintenance plan and improvement plan. Only a portion of Banty Lane is in phase one. Banty is not in good shape. However, Aransas County has a grant to repair Banty Lane. Funds for the, that, the portion that is in phase one would come from operational budget and/or grant, so we would work with, in conjunction with the county and the grant that they have for Banty Lane as far as roads go. Timeline and funding EMS service, ambulance service. The city of Aransas Pass has a contract with Tri-County EMS Ambulance to provide service to all of the area within the city limits. All of the area within the city limits. That includes annexed areas. Tri-County EMS will automatically and immediately extend its service to any newly annexed areas. No upfront cost will be needed, however. When we are presented with a new contract prior to the beginning of the upcoming fiscal year, there will be a proposed cost increase to cover the newly annexed area. I have no idea what that would be, if it would be minimal or what. But anticipate fully with the newly annexed areas, assuming that happens. There will be a request from EMS for a cost increase of some kind. Police and emergency communications, a very important issue, comes up constantly. Police service to the newly annexed areas, both phase one and proposed phase one and proposed phase two, will be provided immediately. However, as soon as possible, steps must be taken to strengthen this service. Communication, a top priority for public safety, consequently, for phase one and two. Dispatchers will be needed in order to provide coverage. Estimated cost approximately a hundred and six thousand dollars, a hundred and six, seven, a hundred and six thousand seven hundred and four dollars annually for the additional dispatchers. At this point, it's not known how many additional police officers will be needed. We need to analyze that further. That's gonna take some work by our police department to analyze exactly what needs to be done. We anticipate there will be a request for additional police officers, not in a position, because we simply don't know. We need to test this area and see what's needed, and then would adjust accordingly in upcoming budgets. However, service would be provided immediately upon annexation. Okay, fire. Fire protection will be, that, provided immediately to the newly annexed areas. However, as soon as possible, steps must be taken, taken to strengthen the service. We already have a new fire truck coming in. We're the last city in this area to get this type of fire truck. It is ordered, as a matter of fact, and will be on the way in a matter of months. Six additional personnel will be needed as soon as funding is available, which will, oh, thank you. Which will bring three shifts to six-man crews. The cost of six additional firefighters is three hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. hundred and sixteen dollars. There's a grant out there that, it looks promising. I've worked with this grant before in other cities. And it's a phased-in. You start, they pay one hundred percent, and then it declines over a period of time. It gets your time, gives you time to budget that in. But the fire department estimates, and this is Phase One and Phase Two, Phase One only would be less than that, and it's hard to calculate exactly how much less. But for both phases, again, council hasn't approved both phases, three hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. And as I said, the safer grant is the direction we plan to go. Garbage pickup service. The city of Aransas Pass has a contract with Absolute Waste Services, Inc. Absolute Waste will cover any annexed areas. In other words, they will provide service to the Phase One immediately after Phase One, if Phase One is approved. Will be, it'll start immediately. The cost. Residential, thirty-three, twenty-seven, if you want it, thirty-three, twenty-seven per month, which includes fire, EMS, and drainage. Senior rate, thirty-two, sixty-three per month, which includes fire, EMS, and drainage. Okay, how much money is Phase One going to bring in? Estimated, we hear this a lot as far as the money that it's gonna bring in. Estimated property tax revenue based on a property tax value, and this is the estimated value for Phase One, a little over four million dollars. The amount of property tax that would bring in, thirty-two thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars, sixty-one cents, not a lot of money, but that's the amount we calculate it will bring in. That's a quick calculation, but that's not gonna be far off. Estimated revenue from utility hookups, that's if everybody, and we've estimated fifty that would be eligible, fifty potential connections, assuming all fifty hookup, thirty-four thousand and eighty dollars. That's the revenue that would come in from the hookups. So want to make you aware of what the expenses are, what the revenue is also. In summary, police and fire can provide services immediately upon Phase One annexation approval, but in the upcoming budgets, these departments will need additional resources, quite common when annexations occur in any city. Estimated combined police and fire costs for upcoming budgets, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Looking at Phase One alone, it may be possible, and probably will be possible, to decrease that amount or decrease that cost in Phase One only. EMS can provide services immediately upon annexation approval. It is estimated, it is anticipated, an increase in cost will occur in the next budget. That cost is unknown at this time. Water and sewer will be provided to Phase One within two and a half years. The cost will be, as we said earlier, six point five million. Trash service will be provided to the annexed areas. County roads in Phase One will become city roads and maintained by the city within the city's operational budget. For the next five years, the cost should be minimal. However, the roads in this area will become part of the city's annual street repair program. The revenue, property tax, thirty-two thousand, six seventeen, utility connections, all, that's the maximum, would be thirty-four thousand and eighty dollars. And I believe that is all I have. Mr. Mayor and Council, as far as the service plan goes, copies have been passed out. We're also gonna be posting a copy of this on the webpage, if it hasn't been done already.
Mayor, as the city attorney, I would now recommend that you proceed with receiving public comments. This is a public hearing, and so I'd ask that you open the public hearing for those comments, sir.
Okay, now, I open the public hearing for citizen comments, and remember, guys, it's three minutes per person and one time that you get to come up here and be able to speak your piece, and you have another turn tomorrow, and I would like no outburst or anything like that, okay? Let's keep it all nice and smooth, and come up, bring your comments, we'll hear them out, and we'll go one at a time, three minutes apiece. And just, when you come up, make sure you give your name and your address, and go from there.
My name is Lincoln Davis. I live at sixteen, ten North McCannell Street, which is a property contained in Phase One of the city's annexation plan. I purchased this property six years ago. My wife and I looked for a long time for a home that we could turn into a hobby farm. The house we bought is at the end of a dirt driveway. The property is eight acres total. Five acres being a pasture behind my house. Next to us is a neighbor with a similar eight acres, and on our other side is a neighbor also with five acres. These are all rural properties. Everybody in Phase One, you can see. Back at home, my wife and I, we raise chickens, geese, and pigs. We have farm dogs, we shoot skunks. It does not make any sense to incorporate our property, nor those of our neighbors, into city limits and subject them to the codes and regulations of residential neighborhoods. They are not at all the same. When I purchased my property, it was likely the biggest investment that I will make in my lifetime. Part of that investment was a good functioning water well and septic system. So city water and sewer service is something that I do not want and do not need. It makes obsolete a significant portion of the biggest investment of my lifetime. When Hurricane Harvey hit, my wife and I both lost our jobs, and the nursing home that we worked at was damaged beyond repair. Many healthcare workers in the area have found themselves unemployed and are having difficulty finding new jobs due to damaged facility and a decrease in the population, and we are still struggling with underemployment. We are currently getting by with approximately twenty-five percent of our pre-Harvey income. A major increase in our taxes would be a hardship and difficult to afford. That it will come without any tangible benefit is an even harder pill to swallow. Please try to put yourselves in my shoes and in the shoes of my neighbors. You are changing the rules on us. We have all made major life decisions about where we call home and what we can afford based on a set of rules that you are now proposing be changed regardless of the opinions of the people for whom it will affect most. Please remember that you were elected to serve the members of your community. How would you feel if this were your property, or your sons', or your daughters'? Succinctly, I oppose the annexation for the following reasons. One, these are rural properties, not suited for the same regulations as residential neighborhoods. Two, these properties would not benefit from access to city water or sewer services. Three, a sudden significant tax increase would be difficult to afford for my family and likely others. Four, a change in the rules without a vote from those who it affects most is simply unethical. Please take these points into consideration as you deliberate. I beg you, I beg each and every one of you not to move forward on any proposed annexation. Thank you for your time.
My name is, my name is Martha Hoblitzel. My address is on the sign-in sheet. I'd rather not say it on the live stream. I'm here not because I'm in Phase One, Two, or Three. I'm here because I own property in the city. I own property on Pacific Avenue or City Street, it doesn't say. I've owned it for forty years. I spoke to you about it Friday. I've owned it for forty years, and now I'm sixty-five. I have yet to be on the property. When we bought it at the courthouse, we intended to buy something else, but it went for a much higher price, and we bought this. We were shown a map, it had a street. Trust me, for forty years, there's been no street. There is no drainage. There is no city water. There is no sewer. This might become the same thing as Con Brown Harbor. Matt, the mine is Pacific near Matlock. I have no way to get there. I don't know what you're gonna provide these people that they don't already have. Your attorney said by annexing, you give the residents the protection of what they want? Well, I've owned this for forty years. I didn't get a notice that you're going to change it to the ag. I never got a notice. I never got a letter, I never got a certified, I never got a call. Somehow, I missed it in the newspaper. I never got a notice. I would've protested that. I have six twenty-five-foot lots. I can't sell them because nobody can do anything with them. Can't do it. I again, I'm against you doing any annexation till you give me a street.
Okay. Okay, I wanna keep all, I wanna keep all the clapping down, and I'm gonna say it again, and I'm gonna say it again. Let's all keep it calm, and I don't need no outbursts or anything like that, okay? So let's all keep calm and collective. Next person?
I live on fourteen, twelve Westmore Avenue, and my name is John Kane, and I'm totally against your annexation, and nothing is gonna change my mind. And y'all have not asked any of these people if they wanted to be annexed.
My name is Chad Mathis, and me and my wife recently acquired land on Cream Road. These people have made good points, and there are many reasons why those of us that are still in the rural area do not need your services. But the main thing I see here is due diligence. You're wanting to pay for the water and sewer service with possibly these grants or apply for some others? You're wanting to talk about adding police force after you study it? I'm pretty sure even I'm smart enough to find out from the county how many calls they have had at these addresses within the last year and make a plan off of that. It seems to me you're putting the cart before the horse. You're trying to get things done before you're ready. Due diligence is required before you impose your will upon people, and instead of imposing your will, you should supply us with this information and let us decide. If you provide me with benefits that are greater than the cost, I will gladly go for it. But as I see it now, I see nothing but cost and little to no benefit. Do your due diligence and let me decide. Let the people decide if what you can provide is worth what you're going to cost us. Taxation without representation is a terrible offense. That's how this country was started. Things are going worse every day, from the federal, the state, and the cities, and we do not need to be subjected by this, by the people who are in any kind of authority over us. You're supposed to represent, not govern. Do your jobs and give us the information we need. Thank you.
I'm old as hell, and I'm against it. My animals are against it. I've already paid for my road. The county come out there, everybody on our duffel paid for that road to be done. Y'all wanna give us the money back? That's it.
I am a veteran, and I just moved my whole family down here to this area.
Can you state your address?
Pardon? I live on Longoria. Just moved my whole family down here for a new job, relocating after being thirty-some years outside Victoria, Texas. I lived in the country there, and I chose to live in the country here. If I'd known this was coming, I would not have moved my whole family down here. I might not have taken that job. I do not approve of this. Thank you.
How y'all doing tonight? My name's JT. I live on Murphy Road. My address is written down if you need the specifics. I addressed this council on Friday. Not much has changed. And I don't know that we're gonna say anything unique from one person to the next, but I wanna reiterate some stuff. That gentleman right over there basically stole words out of my mouth, not that he intended to, but you guys weren't elected by any of the people that are represented here. You didn't come to us and ask us. I get what Corpus is trying to do, as the city attorney has tried to point out. The one thing she said, they had tried to do this. In other words, the way she spoke, it's in the past. If you guys truly wanna represent us, even though we didn't vote for you, let's wait to see what that bill in the Texas Senate Committee, let's see what it does. This is all where your process started. So if the, if the whole idea is just to stave off Corpus, I get that. That's what you guys are here to do, to protect the interest of our city. But at the end of the day, you're acting before you have facts. Another thing that was pointed out here, again, something I asked about on Friday. Are grants guaranteed? The city manager said they're not guaranteed. You just got grants for Sherwin Forest, that area you annex over there. Congratulations, somebody did some hard work on that. But now we're talking millions of dollars, and you're making the whole state of Texas pay for that, not just these city residents. You're not only raising taxes, but you're probably gonna tax people out of the properties that they own now. Because it's city code, plus the new taxes, they're not gonna be able to afford it. You're taxing people out of their homes by doing it, by imporing city taxes on them. And again, what the gentleman said, I too am also a veteran, and I appall taxation without representation. Again, these people fighting this did not have the opportunity to talk to you about your overall goal as each individual council member and you, the mayor, to find out what your plan was. And I can also tell you this, that in my lifetime, every time I've taken a knee-jerk reaction, it's always come back to bite me in the butt. Thank you.
Darcy's Ericlor, Aransas Pass, address is back there. This doesn't affect me yet.
Can you state your name and address?
I just did. Darcy's Ericlor. I live in Aransas County. It does not yet affect me, but I know it's going to, okay? My thing is, we moved from Aransas Pass out to the county for room for our dogs and, you know, whatever. We don't do drugs. My husband drinks, but look at all of the meth users, the prostitutes, everything out there, okay? We are paying our taxes. Why raise them? Why change our way of life, having our burn pile outside? I mean, we took a piece of crap land and made it into something nice. We're still working on it, all right? You guys are wrong. You're not here for the average working man. Money, 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 greed, 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 okay? That's all I have to say, but you guys are wrong. Take care of this town. Where's our hospital? Look at the street people, the whores out there. You know it.
My name is Wesley Denny. I'm just bought five acres of land on Banty Lane, right at the edge of the first proposed area. And the reason I purchased this land is because it's in the county, and there's no restrictions on it. And now I just purchased this land, I haven't built a home on it or anything, and now I'm restricted, gonna be restricted on what I can and can't put on there because of being in the city limits now. The residents on Banty Lane got together and voted down to have our road paved because we like it the way it is. The city was gonna fund, or the county was gonna fund most of the paving, and it wasn't gonna cost us much at all to have it done. But we voted it down. We like our land the way it is, we like our road, a dirt road. We like it the way it is, we don't want it changed. We wanna keep things the way they are. Don't force it on us. I was looking at your map, and from what you all said about Corpus Christi trying to take us over, they can't, you said they can't take the EJTE, EGTE, EJT, sorry, and it's a one-mile radius, we're right up to Rockport. They can't take any farther to the bay as it is. So they can't go through that and take it to the bay like your city lawyer said that. So they can't go through that. We're right next to Rockport City. So, I mean, I don't know what you're trying to do, but it's not good. Don't do it.
My name's Crystal Downs. I live on twenty-two, ten Marshall Lane. Look, my partner and I bought our land four years ago. It wasn't annexed in, it's not annexed in, it's right on that line. We have horses, we have goats, chickens, dogs. It's three acres. Love it. We can build anything we want. We have a septic, water well, everything. We also have city water. I like that. I get what she's saying, you know? Don't let Corpus come in. They screw stuff up. Don't get me wrong. Y'all do too. Y'all have sinkholes, by the dump, y'all can't take care of a lot of y'all's stuff. I mean, grants don't take care of everything. Y'all lose money. All cities do. Don't count the horse before the cart. Don't count the horse before the cart, you know? Take care of what y'all have. Think about things. You know? Don't do this.
Hi, my name is Sherry Green. We have an RV park off Jacoby Lane, um, salt on the rim. We don't live there, but we bought it right after Harvey. And me and my husband literally built the park ourselves, hands up, everything there. My tenants are like my family, so I'm speaking for them. They are wonderful people. We try very, very hard to keep our park clean, keep the meth out, keep the trouble out. And my tenants are great people. They don't have much money. So, if this comes to us, then I got to pass the cost on to them, which they don't have it. And our hearts go to our tenants because we love them. So, I'm asking you, you know, we just put in a twenty-five thousand dollar septic system. We don't need it. We don't need your water. We have a good well system. So I am asking you, please, don't do this. Thank you.
My name is Oprah Willstar. I live at twenty-two oh-four North McCamble. And my granddaughter's name is Sage and she was like to speak.
I don't really want to give my animals away. I've had these animals since I was four. I really love my animals. I don't want to go in the city limits of Corpus Christi.
No, of Aransas.
Of Aransas, sorry.
Is that all you want to say? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is James Niblet. I live at four eleven State Highway one eighty-eight. Currently, we're not in Phase One, but the original letter that was sent out with all the yellow, we was in that. Right up by the line there of, of Rockport, so it's either Aransas County or San Patricio County. I'm a disabled veteran. I like the country. I'm perfectly content with the sheriff deputies patrolling one eighty-eight, which they do constantly. Never had a problem with getting an ambulance to the residents. Uh, I represent myself, my wife, sister-in-law, and my mother-in-law that live on the property, two acres. I vote against being annexed. That's plain and simple of it all. I like having critters. Uh, I don't like having the city ordinance tell me what I can and can't have, or how many of what I can have. So, that's my discontent on the matter. So, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Susan Fest. I live on Jacoby Lane. I'm not in this particular phase. I'll probably be in the next one. But I know a lot of people on my street and other streets around me who bought their homes there because they're, they may be like me. I'm retired, I'm old. I'm, do not have the money or the resources to pay the taxes that are going to come up, to pay for all the extra stuff. We bought there for a reason and we're happy to be there like we are. I'm sorry if that makes an effect, but I'd rather, I kind of wish that we would, uh, possibly figure out how to build another hospital or get some more medical services in the area than, than, uh, raise our taxes. I'm sure all that goes into it, but, uh, there's a lot of other things that have to come first, like the big sinkhole on McCamble for one. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Longoria Marquez and I live on Longoria Road. I've been there since I was nine years old. Uh, my dad used to own that property and then he gave it to, to my siblings and myself. I've been there a long, long time and I love all my neighbors and I know all of them and they all know us. And if I need a policeman, they come out right away. I also have, um, the cell number to my commissioner, Mr. Cheney. And after the hurricane, he came right away to try to do what he could to help us with the drainage. It's not fixed, but they came to try to do the best they could. Uh, it has been a real peaceful place there and we do pop firecrackers on Fourth of July and New Year's Eve and we run, we also, uh, the men like to shoot their guns. But so far, no one has ever got hurt that I know of with shooting their guns or their firecrackers or starting a fire. So, I'm, I know that, that y'all mean well in what you're trying to do. And we can't stop progress, like I tell my grandkids. It has to go on computers. Technology is coming. But I do know that there is peace out there. We can have animals, we can have cats, dogs, and I have plenty of cats. My neighbors know it and they have dogs. And so, um, I wish you well with whatever happens and thank you for listening to me and you'll have a wonderful evening.
Yes, I'm Billy Cloud and I live on Longoria. And we retired off of our farm nineteen years ago and moved down here to live in the country because like Mary said, we have animals. I have a fishing pond. And I don't pay much taxes. I live on limited income. And we don't need it, period. So just do what you can with your heart. God bless you.
My name is Carol Salinas. I live on Eleventh Street in Aransas Pass. I'm not affected by this annexation. It does not affect me in any way. But I would like to know if you, the council, city manager, or anyone has put out any information explaining to the people who will be affected, what will happen to their new sewer system, to their water well? Are they going to be forced immediately to hook up to water, sewer, to take advantage of our city, uh, utilities? I don't know if, I have not seen it and I don't know if that information has been put out. I think it's a very good idea that it would be done, should have been done sooner. Thank you.
My name is Sandra Hobbs. I live on Longoria Road. We, my husband retired from twenty-five years in the military and that was right before Harvey. We just pulling ourselves out of the water and this probably isn't going to help us any. I'm against the annexation.
Hi, my name is Madison Dio. Uh, I'm here representing my dad, Michael Dio, with Mike's Waterwell Drilling, um, Pump Services. We live off of Longoria on Arena Road and we oppose all annexation.
I'm, uh, Russell Edlin and I live at twelve nineteen Jacoby. And, uh, I don't need any of y'all's services. I've already got everything y'all can give me. I get my water from Rockport and I've got a septic system and the bag lady takes care of my garbage, so I'm, I'm covered there. But I was looking at this map where you got the two Phase Ones and you're only annexing the, uh, south side of Jacoby. You're not annexing the north side? I don't understand that, except for a few of them down there in the middle. But the guys across from me aren't going to be affected. And then over here, you've missed three lots, three five-acre lots that are, uh, west of mine toward, uh, Highway thirty-five. And I don't understand that either, how they get left out. And then I was looking at here and you, you got, uh, y'all were worried about your extraterrestrial line. But if you look at, uh, if you was to annex up to Holden Lane on the left-hand side of thirty-five, that would take care of your problem. You wouldn't have to annex the rest of us. All you'd have to do is take those folks. Because, and that would actually give you more, a bigger cut into the Corpus line to where you could cover this, this area up here that's not covered by anybody yet. So, I don't understand why y'all didn't do that either. So instead of sitting here complaining about what y'all did or didn't do, I'd just like some answers. You know, why didn't you take those guys? How come you left these guys out? How come you left the guys out in the middle of Jacoby? I mean, if you're going to take Jacoby, you should have took it all. You know, I mean, come on. And how come you only took the south side of Jacoby instead of the north side? You should have took it all. Because you got to run a water line down there anyway and you got to run a sewage line down there. So why didn't you take both sides of the street? The same. So, it looks to me like planning-wise, somebody dropped the ball. Because you got a chance of doing twice as much with the same amount of expenses, but you chose not to. Any, anybody want to comment?
Roxanne, would you please, would you please explain?
We're not allowed to comment in a public hearing.
Okay, well, could you send me a letter or something? I mean, how, how am I supposed to find out all this stuff if nobody's going to talk?
I've answered the questions that I can answer tonight. Okay.
Well, come on now, that's, come on. You will? Russell Edlin, twelve nineteen Jacoby. Sure.
Good evening. I'm Janice Kerwin and I live on Jacoby. And I'm in that little section that is not in Phase One. And that probably scares me more than being in Phase One because I have no idea what's going to happen in the future. I moved down here, my husband and I, from Houston to get away from big city, big city. I am now a widow and I am on a fixed income. I am taxed about as much as I can handle. I have a well. I have septic. I have garbage pickup. I'm sorry, you just don't have anything to offer me that I need. Aransas County has provided for me, uh, fire department, EMS, police. I understand growth. But, uh, all of this property that you're wanting to take in, so many of them, they're established. People have been there for years. They have all of these things that you're offering. They paid for out of their pockets already. I'm against this. But I wish you well with Aransas Pass because I do like the city. But I would like to see it cleaned up a little, more than what it is, the streets repaired. I have friends that were supposed to have had a street years ago and they're still waiting. Uh, I just think there's a lot more that you can do to make this city a better place without going in this direction. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katrina Havelka. And I'm here to tell you what you guys are doing is wrong. It's so wrong because I have kids. I have five kids. I live on five acres. And I wanted to keep them in the country. And what you guys are doing, you're making it into the city. I wanted to raise them with horses, cows, everything that you could imagine. But you guys are taking that dream from me. And not just that, but I live here three years now. I moved here and I decided to have five acres so I can give my children what they want and what they need. And you guys are taking that away from them. This baby is only eight years, days old. And this, what you're doing is just wrong. You didn't even give us a chance to vote. You didn't give us a chance to speak out and say what we want. Aransas Pass has so much stuff going on. All these streets are horrible. When I have to go down my van, I have to go slow. I have to go five miles an hour just so I don't hit a, a, a little po, yeah, pothole or a bump, because you guys don't know how to do none of that stuff. My kids are fine in Rockport at school. I want to know if that's going to affect their school district. I really want to know because I don't want my kids in Aransas Pass. They are perfectly fine in Rockport. They're doing great. They have great schools. They got great grades. And I would not want, I don't want none of your service. We're fine. We have water. We have light. We're doing the best. But you guys just want to see us in the streets because we are barely making it as it is. And raising our taxes is going to, we're going to be on the streets because of you guys. We're going to lose everything because of you guys. And you'll see five kids and their parents trying to make it by just because you guys, it all boils down to money. And this is not right. It's not right at all. So, you have a good day.
My name's Charlie Shad. I live on Rabbit Run. Your lawyer here said something about the people of Aransas Pass making a vote if some of this went through. I want to know if the people of Aransas Pass, it's going to be y'all or if it's going to be the people that lived in the town that's going to have to say so. All you're doing is taking these people that don't have a limited income, taking the food out of their mouth, taxing them beyond their means. Y'all will wind up with the profit because you'll sell it for taxes, which is more than what it's worth.
Good afternoon. My name's Thomas Baker. I live out on Rabbit Run. I grew up in Ingleside, gradu, uh, didn't graduate there, but served my family in Aransas Pass city limits. About twenty years ago, I moved my family out of the city limits for multiple reasons. Wanted to show my family country living, be free from a few things, forced water bills, forced, uh, sewer bills regardless of how the water is used. We have trash out there. We, we have everything we need. And I, I don't, I don't think it's fair that we don't get a vote. It's, it's just not right. I'm not in the, I'm not in the annexed place right now. I'm on Rabbit Run though. And I'm just waiting for a Phase Four. I mean, is that something that's coming? Not this time, next year?
No.
Why, 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 why is that specific area being left out? Was it too many voters? Was it too many voters? Too many, too many people to make a vote, to force y'all to give us a vote? I mean, it doesn't make any sense to me.
My name is George Bills. I live on four, four thirty-four Rabbit Run. And the county was fixing, they got some ditches inside that road, till y'all decided you'd go annex us. As soon as y'all decided they'd go, you'd go annex us, they decided they're gonna weigh it on you. We get, I'm getting drowned over there, every time it rains. That's all I got to say.
My name is May Dawson. I live at four thirty-six Rabbit Run Road, and I'm not sure whether I'm annexed or not, because you changed the map, and I can't tell by looking at it. But I also have the bag lady garbage service, and you're taking my customers and giving them to somebody else. And I do a better job than they do, anyway, even though I don't even know who they are. And I'm also cheaper, and I'm still better. I have heard that, too. I have heard that.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. My name is Kristi Ilfree, and I'm on Banty Lane. I am also a business owner, and I've lived on Banty Lane now for about four years. So, if you were familiar with the road collapsing in September and October, my property was the conduit. So, one thing you should know, just as an aside about Banty Lane, yes, the road is in bad shape, but it is not necessarily because it is in, quote, "unimproved road." We have multiple drainage issues. So, currently, today, all these months later, I still have acres of water on my property. It's about a foot under my house. So, the annexation proposal will affect me both personally and in a business capacity. I have a nursery on Banty Lane. Currently, I'm leasing part of my neighbor's land, because my, my property is still flooded from June, September, and October. We moved out into the country, out in the county area. We came from Plano. So, of course, my Plano upbringing did not prepare me for, uh, country living. But I have enjoyed it immensely, and I would like to keep it that way. I do oppose the annexation. I'm not opposed to annexation as a rule, but this annexation, I have some questions about. I know you can't respond to them this evening, but I will put my name on this list, I would like to have more information. One thing I'm not quite clear about is this map. So, I am in Phase One. I'm one of those few, I think it's seven properties on Banty Lane, that is proposed for annexation. So, I'm not sure how you're planning to bring city water and sewer to those few properties if everything around us is county property. The road is unimproved. The grant that was applied for, I think it's, they only, the county only received part of the grant. So, I'm not sure how, how that's gonna take place. So, I guess, from a business perspective, you know, I offer plants and consultation and design services for a price, and my customers receive my products and services immediately. But it seems like I'm gonna be paying for services for at least two and a half years before I actually receive them, but it could be multiple years. That's not really, to me, in the business model, that doesn't make sense to me. So, I would like for you to reconsider your annexation map, and maybe make it more sense to the common people. But thank you very much for listening to us this evening.
My name is Gail DeGrange. My name is Gail DeGrange, I live in Sherwood Forest. I was part of the other annexations. We've not received city sewer that I don't want. I asked Vicki particularly not to annex us, it happened anyway, it was a unanimous vote. I want to retire, I wanted to build cabins out there, and now the city has so many ordinances that we have, and all the promises that were made to us were not fulfilled. We have, they, they don't take care of our road, the county at least took care of our road. Our ditches don't get mowed, the county mowed our ditches. The one ditch that we did dig out, the mosquitoes, it got dug out too deep, and now the water just stands in the ditches. I don't see police patrolling. I don't think you've lived up to what you told us you would do for us.
Hello. My name is Florinda Charles, and I live in the Sherwood area, too, Sherwood Forest. And it's the second year that we pay in city taxes, and really, we haven't seen no improvement either. So, I wanna know why. And also, I, I don't see the reason why we wanna grow up, big city, when we don't have the basic, like, hospital. In St. Harvey, we don't have a hospital, we didn't have Corpus Christi for anything. And also, a nursing home. We don't have, the elderly had to go to Rockport or Corpus or Portland. So, why we wanna grow up when we don't have the basic for, for a city, a big city that they wanna be? So, that's my point. Thank you, that's all I have.
My name is O.D. Brooks, I live at, uh, four ten Jacoby Lane. I'm a disabled veteran. I live by myself, I got ten acres I try to take care of. I don't like city living, and if you annex it, I won't like it anymore. So, y'all do what you want to, if we can't stop you, we gonna fight you anyway.
My name is Sean Gardner, I live on Rodeo. I'm in Phase Two, I think, but first map said I was in Phase One, and then the map y'all showed us earlier says I'm not in any phase. My thing is, I'm the only resident on Rodeo that's in the proposed annexations. Y'all would have to bring in two miles of pipe, two miles of road, because the road has not been paved. I built the road. The county gave me permission to build a ditch to the ocean through my neighbor's property, so we can get drainage, because my road was too feet underwater. What are y'all gonna do that I haven't already done? Y'all, y'all are annexing the road, y'all are annexing just my property. That means y'all ain't gonna, have no plans to build the road up, are y'all? Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't need fire, I don't need, uh, share, uh, I got Sheriff's Department and that from Aransas County. Garbage trucks are not gonna be able to go down my road, they'll get stuck. Four-wheel drive is the only way to go on my road. So, have y'all thought that into y'all's plan? You're gonna have to have four-wheel drive everything to get out there. That's all I got to say.
Hi, y'all. I asked y'all a question the other day about the taxes. People have been paying their taxes out there at Sherwood Forest, and the last place y'all annexed, and y'all said y'all got grants. So, my question was, what did y'all do with all the tax money? All the tax money that these people have been paying? What'd y'all do with it? Y'all said, you said you'd have an answer.
The amount of tax dollars we've received for that area, for that relatively limited period of time, is small. We're probably talking in the area of ten thousand dollars. The amount of repairs that are, and the, and the grant for the water and sewer, that exceeds a million dollars. So, for those tax dollars, people in Sherwood Forest, rightfully so, are getting a million dollars for approximately ten thousand dollars, to answer your question.
So, what makes it worth it to the city for y'all to annex if you only get ten thousand dollars in revenue? What makes it worth it to the city? And what makes it worth it to the city to be annexed out there? Just the grants?
The questions that are being asked can go back to the original presentation that I did tonight. There are two reasons.
You didn't let everybody in.
There are two reasons why the city council is considering annexation. One was to prevent the intrusion from Corpus Christi, and the second was to protect the will of the people for economic development, growth. If it's in the ETJ...
The will of the people are telling you they don't want this. Please look at me. I'm not being disrespectful.
I, I just represent the city of Aransas Pass, and so I wanna make sure that the mayor remains in control.
And we're saying we don't want this. If, if y'all annex, we're gonna be voters. I'm, I'm just trying to help. I'm just trying to be helpful.
And, and we're listening, we're, we're listening to what you have to say, thank you.
Pay attention.
We're, we're listening.
My name is Miles Keller, I live on Rabbit Run, and I oppose any and all annexations by the city of Aransas Pass. What y'all are doing is destruction of a way of life.
My name is Sarah Gunmesh, I live on Jacoby Lane, and I just simply find this taxation without representation. Though it may be technically legal, it is morally wrong and reprehensible that you would
My name is Daniel Jimenez, I live at one forty North Arch Street. And from what I understand of the statute, state statute, one city cannot annex into another city's ETJ, which would be Corpus Christi could not annex into our ETJ irregardless. You know, they could try, but we have legal standing, city would, anyway. Now, there's another understanding that I have, is that the figures or estimates during an annexation are supposed to be made with the preceding year's budget. It was one of the issues we brought up in the annexation of the Sherwood Forest area. We were annexed, I think it was January of twenty sixteen. And before, right before the annexation, I and Paul Harrison, the then-city attorney, then-city manager, our attorney, and the development planner at that time, we met and had a private conversation, and we asked three things of the city. Please redo the annexation, because we found so many errors, multiple, numerous errors. The errors are that thick, that we found in the way that they, that they did the annexation. Now, I know, none of you are to blame for that. But we found those errors, and we asked, as I say, three things. Please do the annexation over. Please provide full municipal services within two and a half years, as the statute requires. And give us a decent zoning designation. Almost everyone in that area is on non-conforming use, because of the current zoning designation. We're zoned as a manufactured home park, and that zoning designation is only for a person that owns five acres. The majority of the people in that area own between a quarter of an acre to an acre of land. So, we are non-conforming use, which doesn't make any sense at all, because the statute pertaining to zoning requires that a city zone an area for its particular use. And if you, if you're non-conforming use, you're not technically able to use it. And technically, you're not, we're not, technically speaking, we are not able to use our zoning designation. And that's what we asked. Please provide, start over, provide us with the services that are required within two and a half years, and a decent zoning designation. And we were told, absolutely not. We are not gonna do it over, and we're not gonna change anything. As a matter of fact, we...
Three minutes are up.
I'm sorry. I forgot that you had a three-minute pool, but...
Give everybody a chance to speak.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Maceda. I'm actually a resident here of Aransas Pass, but I'm here on behalf of the people and my friends out in the country. I do oppose the annexation, because I know, I was living comfortably in Rockport just before the hurricane, but what I could afford, and I was ready to buy, was here in Aransas Pass. I love it. My taxes did go up this year significantly. I can't afford it. I work two jobs. And, um, so I do oppose it, because I do, I do understand their feelings and their finances.
What would happen with school districts? Do we know? Would they stay the same, or would they split? Now that we're in the city, we'd have to go to Aransas Pass?
If the school districts are not affected, they remain the same.
Right.
Hello, my name is Graciela Aguirre, and I live in Jacoby Lane, and you said last time that I'm, I'm not in the Phase One. But I have a question. What I understand is, like, you are doing this because you don't want that Corpus come, and now we are going to be part of Corpus. If Corpus come, are they are going to decide that we are going to be just in Corpus area? Or they are going to send a letters like you do also? One time you do, you send a letters to the persons to say that you are going to be in Phase One. Are Corpus is going to do the same?
I can't provide legal advice on what Corpus would do, but if there is no annexation of the area by the city of Aransas Pass, the entire area will more than likely become an industrial area. I am not.
No, that's...
Oh, okay, well, my, and my question goes to, if city of Aransas Pass come and send a letters and said that they want us to be part of Corpus Christi, of course, we are going to do the same as we are doing right now. We don't want it to be part of Corpus Christi.
Mr. Mayor, there's no one else in the lobby, just for your information.
Good.
You, you can come back tomorrow and say it again.
I lost my bank card the other day, so I don't know if you turned it in, but thank you very much. And if you know who did, I love to say, Baker said, "Thank you very much."
And if you know who did, I want to thank Baker said thank you very much.
My name is Gwen Doan. I do not live in the current annexation, but I was in it before. But I really don't want the annexation at all. I'm not going to say a whole lot. I don't have a great big speech, but really don't want to be a part of Aransas Pass. I like what I have. I'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
You can come back tomorrow. Well, I declare the public hearing closed and it's 11:30, 7:33. Your motion?
I'll make it. Second?
All in favor? Aye.